It's a goal, right?
Okay. It is 6 o'clock on Monday, July 10th, and I'm going to call the meeting of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee to order, please. We are here to discuss or review the Council Rules of Procedures and any revisions that may need to be made. Periodically, we have to look at these to make sure that we're up with the times, up with technology, that things haven't changed, that rules of orders haven't changed, and change them as they need be to fit the new day. So, we all have in front of us the general provisions, and the changes that are proposed are highlighted in yellow. Has everyone -- do we need to go through these one by one, or just...
I think it might make sense to go through them by the sections that are highlighted, just to at least see if anybody's got a question or needs an explanation on why the change is being recommended.
Okay, so Rule 2...
Who made the changes?
It's been a combination of, well, Mary did the lion's share of the work, and Scott as well. Some of this is done by consulting with other communities, with other departments. A lot of it is also, like, for instance, to bring us up technology-wise, to recognize digital information. The attorney is also...
The legal counsel.
Yeah, the attorney also has brought up some changes for us. So, with that said, the first change is on Rule 2, which I thought we had already implemented. Yeah, okay. Yeah, all right. And it goes from beginning at 7:30 to beginning at 7:00, which we've been doing that for at least the last seven years, I think. Yeah. The next one is Rule 5, which discusses the presiding officer, and it basically defines or gives a little more of a definition to the mayor pro temp's position, that it deletes the portion about acting mayor pro temp selected by members of the council shall act as mayor to basically saying, this is if they're both absent, if both the mayor and the mayor pro temp are absent, that the sitting councillor with the longest tenure shall be acting mayor pro temp. And in the instance that we have two councillors that have the same tenure, which, right now we do have that, we have three different councillors that were elected in the same -- at the same time, then the presiding officer should be determined by a vote from the councillors.
What was it before? Was it vote of the council?
No, it was that Mayor Pro Temp was just appointed.
And it was...
The council had given up their bylaws.
Okay.
And then this all came up, because there was an instance where the mayor and the mayor pro temp were not going to be at a meeting, and we had no fallback plan.
Okay. Good plan.
Yeah, so this is to give us something. And then Rule 7, which establishes quorum, basically says that four councillors will continue to be in with the mayor, or the mayor pro temp will be a quorum. And it also goes on to say that in the event a quorum cannot be established for the conduct of city business at the meeting, will be rescheduled by order of the city manager for no later than seven days from the scheduled meeting. Because I guess we've also been in a circumstance where there were not, there was not a quorum, and while no official business was, you know, decisions were made, business had been discussed, and we cannot do that. If we don't have a quorum, we cannot discuss business. So that defines that even more. The agenda...
I don't remember that at all.
I love this one. Thank you.
This...
Rule 8.
Rule 8. This is moving, this is basically saying that we're going to have things posted by Wednesday. But, oh, I'm sorry, that everyone has to have the information to the city clerk by Wednesday, and it will be available by Wednesday, yeah, by 4:00. I couldn't find that there. And that we can provide electronic means to view the agenda and all the attachments. This is one of the technology things that we needed to put in there, so that we are within our own rules, that it does not have to be paper.
I had heard rumors, and I forget where I heard it, that these little, whatever they are, that -- I love it when you point at me like that. That these little iPads or whatever they are weren't going to be available anymore. We're going to replace them. That's the rumor I heard.
That we are?
Yeah.
As a city? No, we're still using those.
And we're going to continue to use them?
We have a different agenda management program that we'll be switching to in August, but we'll still be using the iPads.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Because this makes it so much easier at planning boards and at council meetings. I know people like paper, and that's okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On that particular...
We've got people watching us at home.
Oh, we're on TV, yeah.
Brenda Bear, Consular Ward for, on that particular item, when you talk about the electronic copy being available, you don't say paper copies will be provided.
Actually, it does. It says that they will be accepted, standing requests will be accepted.
Standing requests for...
So on the top of page 5...
Yeah, a standing request for a paper copy shall be accepted.
Yep.
So I can...
So you want paper, you get paper.
Without having to do it week after week?
No, it's standing requests.
Okay.
We may not have them printed in your box at the Wednesday afternoon at 4:00, but at some point on Thursday, early in the day, we'd get them.
Well, you say they're by Friday.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. And then for Rule 9, with the order of business, this is basically allowing the presiding officer to rearrange the order in which we discuss things if need be, and to allow us to remove items from the printed agenda if they're not going to be discussed at the meeting. That's basically done so that we will maybe cut down on confusion when people show up thinking we're going to be discussing milfoil, because milfoil is at the very tail end of our agenda. It's just listed as a future agenda item, and people think that maybe it's going to be there. We'll also be, we're looking at taking off on all the committees, if an item is not going to be discussed at the meeting, any of the committee items, to taking those off, and maybe once a quarter, having it on there just as a refresher. But it's really just so people don't think that they have to be here to speak, or that we, as a council, maybe don't get confused and think we have to speak on something that's not, not going to be discussed at all, that's not on the agenda.
I have a question.
Okay.
This seems to mandate or suggest that only items E, F, G, H, and J of our new agenda will be able to be reordered by the mayor, and all other items would have to stay in place unless, what, could the council by vote move something up or move it around?
Yes, so at the beginning of the meeting, if there was a request made of the mayor that was to move up something, maybe there was something under new business that somebody to speak to it at a limited time. So, just as a standing, the presentations, the consent, the more routine items, the mayor could be able to rearrange in putting the agenda together, but the council could make a request that evening at the start of the meeting to move something.
Just as long as we retain that flexibility, I'm fine with that.
And we're trying to make it even more flexible.
Yeah. No, good idea.
Then, under the same rule, item F, for citizen comments for subjects not on the current agenda, because sometimes the meeting has been taken over, so to speak, there's been, there's been an inordinate amount of time spent by one individual or a group of individuals on an item that's not on here. We were hoping to limit this to no more than five minutes, and then, because if it's truly important, we can either, if it's of an emergency nature, we can either handle it, right decide to handle it at that moment, or we can defer it to the city manager to look at it, or ask that it be put on a future agenda item, as a future agenda item. The next item was... Under that same topic, yes?
I saw somewhere here that there was, after you had your five minutes, you could come back for another two minutes?
That's under public hearings.
That's on public hearings? Okay.
I think the point of this was to make sure that people are being decisive in what they're coming to talk about.
And if you can't do it in five minutes, you have no business being here.
Five minutes is a long time.
If you tell them they have a time limit, they'll get as much information into you in five minutes as they're going to give you in 20.
Yeah.
They'll just be more decisive.
And the next item was H, nominations, appointments, and elections. All letters adjusted from here down, and I'm not really sure what we were doing with that one.
They moved former R to...
Okay, okay, that's right. That's right. I got lost. Sorry. Then, under citizen comments for subjects on the current agenda, again, we're looking at no more than five minutes per person, and then we can also, let's see, and also that can be changed as far as how they speak and the order in which they speak, which I guess the mayor has always been able to group it into people speaking on the same topic at once, but as a notation that we should maybe be aware that that can happen, because sometimes we forget.
Yeah, generally, in those instances, we'll have sign-in sheets that we have, know there's going to be a large topic, and that's when we group them up.
Consular Bear.
This was the part that I was thinking about originally, was sometimes you have a room, not very often, full, and they're there for a particular thing on the agenda. And I've seen people sit there for three or four, almost four hours, till the last thing on the agenda comes up. So I was wondering why we couldn't move new business up for higher on the agenda, and people that want to comment on the matter on the agenda could speak on the individual subjects. I mean, it's just an idea.
We've discussed that before, and it's certainly, that's up to the mayor, isn't it?
Well, no, I'm just throwing it, I'm just throwing it out there.
She's saying in general.
Oh, in general, yeah.
So that, I mean, I could...
Yeah, this isn't set in stone.
... after committee reports and move that up, because generally, what happens in the committee report, if there's something that they're going to take out, they add it to the business.
And you'd have to do it after a citizen comment on items that are on the agenda as well. But I believe if the mayor looked and could recognize that there were, you know, everybody was there...
Well, like with the school board thing, we moved everything up.
Right, we could look to move that up. We try to take some of that into an account when putting the agenda together, that if there's something that we know is maybe going to generate some interest, potentially to move that further up under the new business items, rather than maybe dealing with, you know, a temporary traffic order or something for a blood drive that no one's here to speak on.
Well, that's what I was thinking, some of these consent and action things, they could be moved to the tail end.
Right, but sometimes there might be somebody sitting there for that as well, to answer a question about their walk-a-thon or something, so it's split. But I think this gives us flexibility to be able to look at the room and identify if there's a large group of people here for a certain item, and make the appropriate adjustments to it.
I've seen the mayor do that.
Absolutely, yep.
Quite a few times.
He does a good job at that.
Yeah, but there are a lot of times when people sit here for...
You don't know what they're here for.
No, and some of them get up and leave before it ends, because they've been here a long time.
Yeah, sometimes if it's a one-time item, like if someone's looking to have an extension of the fireworks time for their wedding night, you may not even recognize who they are in the audience, because they may be not from La Conia, and you don't, you don't know why they're here. So sometimes to go out and say, "Why are you here tonight?", sometimes people are maybe a little put off, because you're, you're asking a personal type of question. So, but I think, I think your point well taken, though.
And then the next few items, for instance, Code of Ethics, Rule 14, and C, D, and E, those are just housekeeping items, correct?
Yes, they are. That's actually one in that area. I'd like to get some additional clarification for you, because...
What one are we talking about?
I'm talking about Rule 14, starting on the bottom of page 8.
I do.
Okay.
The attorney has weighed in, I had brought this up when we were looking at this a few months back, and the attorney weighed in, that really, when somebody has a conflict of interest, and a conflict for city business is a pecuniary interest, meaning a financial interest greater than anyone else, so it could be for you, or a family member, or a business. But it's really, I believe, and our attorney believes, the individual councillor's decision to declare if they have a conflict versus necessarily posing the question and letting it be decided by the chair. And there is an option for a person to, if they aren't sure if they have a conflict, kind of present where they might feel that they do, and ask for an advisory vote of the remaining body, and that's, that happens in land use board sometimes, because you're dealing with neighbors or someone who you may be related to, or that type of stuff. But it really should be the individual councillor's person to declare that they have a conflict, and then ideally, you should be doing that right after the agenda item is brought forward and has a second, and before any of the discussion happens. And the councillor should physically get up and remove themselves from the dais and go sit in the audience, and not even be up here for body language or anything. And there's been a couple of times where we've had a councillor, typically in a work-related item, has recused themselves and gone and sat down. Now, the additional point to that is if, maybe there's an agenda item, and as the discussion starts happening, all of a sudden, you have one of those aha moments, and you then realize you have a conflict, you still should be identifying that as soon as you're made aware, you know, point of order, raise a hand, and if it comes to you during the deliberations, that all of a sudden, oh, I hadn't thought about it that way, but I might have a conflict. At that point, you should do the same thing and recuse. But I just want to clarify the language, because it shouldn't be, this is old language, it shouldn't be just up to the chair of any committee to determine whether you, as a board or commission member, or an elected official, has the right to vote on that. So we just want to re-vend that.
Should we reword it then?
I agree. So if I say I have a conflict, I don't need a vote, I don't need ruling, I can just recuse myself, right? That's what you're...
Absolutely.
Okay.
But the flip to that is, I could say, I think councillor Bowns has a conflict.
Well, that's different.
And maybe my, maybe my reasons for saying it are true, but maybe my reasons are a little nefarious, and I don't like the way you're going to vote on something, and I'm trying to not have you. So that's where I think it's the personal decision versus necessarily just the chair. But there are some other steps that if someone who truly wants some input and guidance for the remaining of the board can certainly ask for that advisory opinion as well. But I agree with you that I think it's individual has the responsibility to declare or to make that decision for themselves. So we're going to need a couple of things up and bring some updated language on Section 14 to you.
Okay. Rules of Order, Rule 17, is just housekeeping as well. Okay. Nope?
So you'll note that there's no 15 on the rules, so all those numbers will be changed as well.
Oh, thank...
And I looked on the online version, and 15's not there either. So at some point, it just disappeared.
Okay.
So those will also all be prenumbered.
You can kind of move up?
And Rule 20, with the inclusion of V, is housekeeping. I'm sure that was something that was... Rule 22.
Why?
This was, this is just clarification, right? Yeah.
It was recommended by the county attorney, because there was no clear indication on how a public hearing was going to be scheduled, just what you would do when there was one. So she felt that was necessary to have very concise, this is how it's going to happen.
Okay.
So you can put any agenda on that request, that it be put on the agenda for a public hearing, any item. You haven't changed, you haven't changed that? Okay.
And by the same token, the Rule 22C is just gender, just making it a little more gender-friendly. Okay, so Rule 23, this is allowing us to vote by show of hands and not just by voice, because show of hands was never in there, and we've been doing show of hands for at least the last three and a half years.
Yeah, it was very specific you had to have voice, and there's really no need for it to be.
Okay.
And now councillor Bowns has a problem with C.
I do. I think the option of abstaining should be available. There are rare instances when that would occur. I know it's occurred with me, and there was some debate on it, about whether abstention was a vote, or whether I had to vote or not, and I think councillor Bear has also abstained on different occasions. So my, the, the change that I would suggest is one of two. In the second, and C, in the second sentence, you wrote, "Shall vote or abstain on the question before the council, and eliminate the last sentence of the rule." And abstention shall not signify a vote for the purposes of these rules, since I think abstaining, while rare, has its value. For if you don't want to, if you want to support the measure, but you're not particularly happy with the language itself, or the timing, abstaining is not, is not voting against it, so, or saying yes to it. So I just think the right to abstain is important, and I know that others, other folks do it differently, but I, that's the way I see it.
Heck, I mean, that's in correlation with Robert's rules, as long as you don't engage in a debate, and that's fine.
Yeah.
You can strike the last sentence of the committee rules.
But councillor, is that your intent, that if you, do you feel you would know ahead of time to say, "I'm not going to take a position on this, I'm going to abstain and not partake in the conversation"?
No, I might, no.
Or do you feel you'd be able to offer a...
I might participate in the conversation, and if I were going to abstain, I would probably identify the reason I was abstaining, and the reasons, I mean, the actual conversation itself, the dialogue that the council has over a particular motion, is important, and it may generate, hey, I think I better abstain. And if I'm going to abstain, at least for me, if I were going to abstain, it would be the rare occasion, and I can't imagine the occasion, what the occasion would be, and why I wouldn't articulate the reasons for my abstaining. I just think that...
But it would be an abstention for a reason other than a conflict?
Right.
Two separate, so, conflict, abstain...
Abstaining and conflict are two different things.
So you're feeling you could have partaken in the conversation to share your reason, but then abstain for a reason other than conflict?
And that should be clear. If that confuses it, we need to make that clear, because abstention is not an option when you have a conflict, or when you're perceived to have a conflict, or somebody else proceeds to have a conflict. You can either participate under the rules, or you get out. So you don't abstain because you have a conflict. You abstain because of some principle. I want to support this, but I can't, as it's written, here's why, I don't want to be taken as having a negative vote on this principle, or this policy, so I'm abstaining.
So similar to what we were saying about if in the middle of the conversation, the councillor feels like, oops, I need to recuse myself, it's like, oh, wait, the way this is going, I need an abstention, so to speak, okay. I'm okay with that, are you?
We can reword that.
Okay.
Okay.
To make it clearer for you.
Okay. And then there's Rule 24, item K. No action on a committee item may be taken up at a meeting unless the item is added to the new business of the meeting by the presiding officer. So this is basically when we make a committee report, then it's got to be announced that it's going to be, become part of the agenda later.
Add it under new business.
Can you, can the, can the presiding officer add it to new business on the same night? I mean, we do a report, everybody's in agreement, we present it, and he can put it on new business that night?
This is basically to avoid an instance that happened a few months ago, where someone in the audience didn't realize that an item was going to be, actions would be taken right then, when it was reported on, and they didn't get a chance to speak.
Okay.
So to avoid that, they'll still have another chance to speak during items on the agenda, which comes after the committee report.
Okay.
And at the same time, if the presiding officer feels that this warrants being posted on an agenda and noticed to give it its due, rather than being added during the course of a meeting, they can choose of the importance to, you know, more properly notice it, if you will.
I'm all for things that open up the council to public input, so...
And then item M, basically just clarifies how the minutes need to be, how quickly they need to be given.
It basically says that if a committee report, committee doesn't meet on the same night as a council, you can't use the council minutes as the committee report may have.
Right. And then the next one, the next few are just under resolutions. This is housekeeping, ordinances is housekeeping, going from R to shall be. And another one adds an ordinance, another one is, takes the capital letter out, a second down to, it's housekeeping. Then we're down to complaints, concerns, and suggestions to council, and those are basically rewording the word complaints to concerns, because it puts a little bit...
Softens.
Positive, softens, yeah, because sometimes when people do come up, it's not a complaint, it's just a concern that they're, that they're wanting to, to voice.
I have one other item that isn't in here, because there's a preliminary step, if you would allow me?
Okay, please.
So, in the electronic age that we're in, the legislature passed a law a few years back that allowed for electronic participation in a meeting, and there are some ground rules for that. First and foremost, a physical quorum still needs to be present, so you couldn't have seven chairs here with seven speakerphones and nobody physically present to attend the meeting. But if you have a physical quorum present, there's an opportunity for someone to be able to call in, or Skype in, or whatever the technology might be. They have to be able to be heard by everybody and be able to engage in the conversation. The public needs to be able to hear what is being said. You have to ask them questions like, was it not practicable for you to be here tonight? Yes, I was home recovering from a broken ankle, type of thing, not just, oh, I was home watching the baseball game, I didn't want to come down and participate.
I'm having a really good time at the beach.
You have to ask if, you know, is anybody else with you in the room, so that they have to answer, obviously, as their code of office would be, truthfully. Were that, and if for some reason, we were doing electronically, and somebody, the phone line stopped working, or the internet signal stopped working, the meeting continues, and you don't stop the meeting, because somebody can't participate electronically. So where this comes up is, it says that a elected body, legislative body, board or commission may choose to do that. I think it'd be great if the council took a position, whether you choose to allow that, should it occur at some point in the future, or whether you want to say, no, I'd rather not have that, because even though this council doesn't, isn't divided, and doesn't have a lot of close votes that are either 3-3 or 3-2, politics could come into play of, oh, one time, I want this person to participate, because, you know, they're going to vote on my side of the issue, and, oh, I don't want that person to do it, because I think they're going to vote, you know, quote-unquote, the wrong way. So I think if there's a standing policy, if that were ever to come into play, we've either said that, yes, we would allow it, or no, we're not going to allow that. And I think there was an attempt on one night when the county delegation was trying to get a quorum.
To do that, yes.
They ended up being one short for the physical quorum, but they were going to try to do the call-in on a cellphone into a microphone and be able to make it political. So it doesn't help you establish your physical quorum. You still would need to have four councillors sitting here, but a fifth or a sixth could participate remotely. But I think it would be better to put this on an agenda item, have the council take a position, and if you choose to make it a part of your rules, then we would add it into the rules before you adopt them, and there, or we could always amend them and just add it in. But that way, everyone's clear that, yes, you do allow it, or no, you choose not to allow it.
Just, just, what do you envision the circumstances would be to allow this procedure to happen? I'm on vacation, does that work?
If it's not, if you were out of the country, or out of the region, and it's not reasonably practicable for you to interrupt a vacation to come back, but you wanted to participate in the meeting, yes, if you were sitting down the street in your house, and you just felt like not coming down, that's not the intent of it. So it could be for vacation, because sometimes, you know, vacations might be for a specific event. You need to be out of town, because someone else chose a wedding date. It wasn't that you chose to take a vacation and miss a council meeting, so...
Or business comes up that's important that you are going to...
So those types of things, it's available for.
I think that's probably a good idea, but I think we should be clear about what the rules are in terms of invoking that option, so that, you know, I can't sit up at the house.
And be on vacation at your house.
Well, that's one, a couple of the questions that would have to be asked of someone participating remotely. Was it, was it not reasonably practicable for you to be in attendance tonight? And the answer could be, I'm recovering from surgery, I'm out of state on a business trip, I'm out of state on a family matter. That would be a valid reason.
Okay, how do you know that?
Obviously, people take oaths of office, and you stand by ethics, and it would be on the honor system.
Okay, Consular Bear.
At a recent meeting of the Police Commission, this did take place. Commissioner Tar was in Florida, and they had a telephone hookup, so that you could hear him, and he could hear you, and he participated in the meeting and the votes. They don't do it often, but at this particular time, I... They don't do it often, but at this particular time, I think it was the retirement of the chief, so he wanted to be part of it. But it did work out well, but you'd have to know ahead of time to set up phones.
Yes, we would have to know ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other, it does trigger a couple of items, and one is the questions, and the second one is, every vote becomes a roll-call vote at that point, because you need to be heard, and the person has to be recorded from whatever electronic means they're doing. So we can frame the question and put it onto a, more of a policy decision for the full council, but assuming it passes or fails, I think you'd want to identify clearly that the council either will allow this, or will not allow this, if it meets the intent of the law, just to have it on record, just to avoid one of those situations.
Is that the only other thing you wanted to add?
The only one I have for you, yes.
Okay.
And we can add that to the next regular council meeting agenda to get a position, and then we can, as we wordsmith a few of these things brought up tonight, incorporate it in.
Do we need to meet again?
I think we should, but I just, do we need to move this forward tonight?
You're so close enough to your mic.
We can just have this, this can be continued, so to speak.
Can't hear what you're saying, back there, you're going to come up.
I said, do we meet again? Do we need to meet again? And Counselor Doyle said, I think we do, so I think we need to meet again, so schedule it, let's-
Well, we have to schedule it at the next council meeting, but we can at least just figure out a time that's convenient for all of us.
We won't need more than a half an hour next time, because we'll be rocking and rolling.
And you're not going to be here at the next meeting, correct? The next-
I'm going to be on vacation.
Yes. So is it-
From the beach, mind you.
Oh, that's fine. And it's just the beach down the wiers, right?
It's 20.
So do we want to just go ahead and, um-
She's the 24th?
She's not going to be here, and I think Mary's very important to this.